...session, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Workman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Welcome, members of City Council. The first item on your agenda this evening is a study session to talk about fences and accessory/recreational structures. The way the presentation is structured for this evening is to do a two-parter. We'll do the fences first. We'll talk about the rules or regulations and some associated discussion topics related to fences. And then we will then transition into accessory/recreational structures for a couple of different reasons. One, as councilors are aware with the language in your packet this evening, these sections of code are very dense and have a lot of cross-references. And so, I wanted to make sure that we have enough time to get through the information. And second is a selfish reason to make sure that I can take quality notes based on the different topics. So, the first topic to discuss is fences. The code regulates fences based on two criteria. The first criteria is the zone district that the subject property is located in. The second is based on what area of the lot the fence is proposed to be in. And the code identifies seven different areas of a potential lot. Now, keep in mind that these images are for ease of conversation and reference. The two images before you are pretty traditional lots, right? Pretty rectangular in nature. Some of this can get very subjective once you start to get oddly shaped lots or curved lots and things like that. So, just for the purposes of discussion, we've kept it simple. The first area that the code identifies is Area 1. Area 1 is on the left side image there. It is kind of the purple area. And that is, stated in the code, is behind the front facade, which is the front, I guess, wall of the primary structure. So, it has to be behind that and within the building envelope, or what that really means is on or behind the setbacks for that zone district. Area 2 is from that front facade line to the front lot line. Area 3, again, these first three are on the left-hand side image there. Area 3 pertains to interior lots. Interior lots are those lots that are not adjacent to either a road, a street, a state highway, a park, a trail, things like that. And then Area 4 through 7 is on the image in the right. Area 4 is on the left-hand side of the image on the right side. And that Area 4 is within setbacks that are adjacent to the road, adjacent to a road that isn't South Clarkson Street or Happy Canyon Road. And that's kind of the salmony color that you see there. Area 5 is within a setback adjacent to a state highway. So, that would be Bellevue, Hampden University. Area 6 is identical to Area 4. The only difference is if that street is South Clarkson or Happy Canyon. If it's any other road, then it's Area 4. If it's one of those two roads, then it's Area 6. The final and the seventh area is for those fences proposed in setbacks adjacent to a park, trail, or open space.
Okay, before you move on...
Yes, I was gonna say, let's all take a minute to digest.
Question about Area 2. If a home has greater, is actually set back more than is allowed, so it's set back farther than they could have... Then Area 2 is still from wherever the front facade of the house is forward, not from the setback?
That is correct.
Okay. And is the Area 4, Area 6, and Happy Canyon/Clarkson, are those only on the sides and the rear? Or just any part of your yard that's adjacent to Area 5, a state highway? So, if the side, if your house is, if the side yard of your house is along a state highway, that's Area 5 as well?
The reason for the question, because that was my question as well, I don't think Area 6 is really relevant. There's no side yards that back up to, that side yard onto Happy Canyon or Clarkson, are there?
There's like maybe one, or the corner, maybe.
Yeah, there might be one. There's one driveway that comes out.
Yeah, we have a neighbor that that side yard backs up to Clarkson.
Side yard, okay.
Yeah, so there's a...
Yeah.
Okay, so there are a few. So, does Area 6 then also, that would not, that would not pertain then to the rear fence condition backing up to Clarkson or Happy Canyon? That'd be Area 5.
It would be Area 6. If it's adjacent to Happy Canyon or Clarkson, whether it's front side or rear, it's Area 6.
Oh, that was Kiki's question. Okay, good.
Yep.
So, Area 5 is if any side or rear, but probably not front, right? Any side or rear is a state highway?
Correct, and there are, there's a lot of that condition on Bellevue.
Yeah. Area 4 is if the side or rear is any other street in the city except a state highway or Clarkson or Happy Canyon.
You are correct.
And then Area 6 is if the side or rear is Clarkson or Happy Canyon.
That is correct.
Okay. Got it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you?
What about the front? Yeah.
5 and 6 includes front yard.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then Area 7 is just your side yard if it's a public park, side or rear. Okay.
If you're adjacent to a park, trail, or open space.
There is one house that I'm aware of that's on Happy Canyon, right across from TJ. It's still within Cherry Hills. It's probably the most northerly piece of property that is their front yard, in essence, is right along Happy Canyon. But I don't know of any other on Happy Canyon, at least, that's a front yard.
Okay.
So, this was also provided in your packet materials for this evening. I am not going to go through every zone district and every area and what's allowed and what's not allowed. What I, I do want to start this part of the conversation, however, with, the current fencing standards were unchanged in the update in 2019. So, nothing changed as part of the update as some of the other parts of the code did. It's also my understanding that the current fence ordinance was born out of the blue ribbon panel that was put together by a committee of residents about a host of topics, and one of those topics happened to be fences. And some of you that have been involved in the village longer than I, or even were on council, may be able to add to that. But I say that to say that there was likely thought put into most of what the current fencing ordinance requires. The discussion this evening is not necessarily, are we here to rewrite the fencing ordinance? It's more of, are there areas where we can better fit the needs of our community? And at this point, I want to go through kind of three buckets of information. The first is going through kind of a list, and this was provided in your packet information, of the conversations that myself and Jan have with homeowners most frequently related to the fencing ordinance. The second kind of bucket of information is, we do have a couple of recommendations that staff would like to make to council and get sort of a head nod or an okay to move forward with that. And then the third bucket of information is really council information. You all may hear from constituents. You all may have certain experiences or certain things that you want to discuss as a council body related to the fence ordinance. And at that point, we would love to get that feedback, and hopefully I will be scribbling wildly, trying to take some notes. So, the first bucket of information is related to feedback that we hear most often. And these are not in any particular order. As required by the code currently, properties that are zoned R1 are not allowed to have 100% opacity fence. And just for ease of reference, I'm likely gonna just say screen style fence instead of 100% opacity. That's one in the same. It means that's a fence that you 100% can't see through, thinking of your traditional six-foot cedar fence. So, properties zoned R1 are not allowed to have that style of fence unless they are adjacent to a state highway, South Clarkson or East Happy Canyon Road. A lot of times, we hear feedback from folks that have a fence that was legally permitted decade, you know, two decades ago, and it's fallen apart, and they would like to replace it, and they're an interior lot, they're not adjacent to a road, they're not adjacent to a trail, they're not adjacent to a park. And they find out that when they replace that fence, they have to then replace it with a 50% open style fence. And that's hard for a lot of homeowners to understand. The next conversation we have quite often...
Can I ask you something there, Paul?
Yeah.
Hard for homeowners to understand, or hard for homeowners to accept?
Probably both.
Well, I mean, because I think there's a distinction there, and I didn't mean to be cute, but I mean, I think that's an important thing.
No, I think you're exactly right, right? Because we get the question, well, why, why does the code require that? Well, because the village wants to be an open place, right? With it, with, protects our views and gets to know your neighbors and all that sort of stuff. And so, I had more meant the latter. It's hard for them to understand why the village is telling them they have to do that as opposed to, they just don't like it. Does that make sense? But, but I think, excuse me, I think your point's well made. The, the next conversation is related to fencing adjacent to South Clarkson.
I'm sorry, Paul, can I, can I pick up just a minute? Do you know what the rationale was between allowing 100% screening on R2, I mean, on all the rest of the houses, but not on R1? Or the rest of the lot sizes, rather?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an educated guess that the R1 properties are the city's largest properties. And there was a concern that if folks were allowed to have a screen style fence around the entirety of these large properties, they would start to wall themselves off from the larger community and disconnect themselves from their neighbors.
And as I recall, again, because this ordinance was done the first two years I was on council, as I remember now, I think that actually was a point of a lot of discussion, whether or not R2 should have been thrown in. There's no question that R3 on, it wasn't, but R2 was, because, you know, that's still a big lot at the end of the day. It's just not as big as R1, but it is a big lot, and there was a lot of discussion. And I can't remember why, but it was like, yeah, let's give R2 the, to the break on here. But it was, it was a big point of discussion whether it should have been exempted.
And for whatever it's worth, I was on PTRC when this came through PTRC, and we basically were the ones who wrote the revision that then came to council when Earl was on council. So, I've got my recollection. I didn't go back and look at notes, but I certainly can fill in whatever it is that I remember from the day. And I, the, the part about R1 was largely the idea that the master plan with the semi-rural feel of the village was that it was an attempt to try and open back up the village for a viewpoint as well as community spirit. And then the other thing that came into play on a lot of the discussion was a perception about safety from a solid fence versus a non-solid fence. And at that time, Bill Lucas was on PTRC, and I think he might have even been the chair at the time we did this. But his comment was, and he had some studies that he pointed to, that showed that there was a demonstra, that there was no demonstrated increase in safety due to height or structure of the fence.
I guess then just to add one more thing, the other issue that, safety issue that I remember discussing kind of on both sides of the question specifically was looking at trails and the trails that we have in the village that go between properties that are fairly narrow. And they create a tunnel that is a safety concern if you were to encounter a coyote or an unsavory person or that for some long distance, there's...
Well...
Yeah, and it could crash, and yeah, it's just nowhere to go, so.
And there was discussion about a trail, particularly by Kent, that was up along a south side of a trail that when it snowed or iced, became just a sheet of ice. So, that was also part of it with the safety idea was that, at least with a non-solid fence, some sunlight could penetrate through there so that our trails wouldn't become ice skating rinks.
With respect to that, that's something we gotta talk about, if it's gonna be grandfathered, because there is a six-foot or eight-foot solid fence along there between Kent and the private property owner where the, where the trail goes. And it's still that way. You can't go down there in the winter.
That person came in, and that was what prompted a lot of that discussion, was that they did receive permission to put up that fence at the time.
Okay. Yeah, the, the next conversation we have a lot is why are Clarkson and Happy Canyon treated differently than some of the other major roadways here in the village? As you can see on the slide, if you're adjacent to those two roadways, you are allowed to have a six-foot privacy fence. We often have conversations with folks adjacent to Mansfield, Quincy, those sorts of, of roadways about, you know, those are heavily traveled areas as well, and privacy and noise and all that kind of stuff. The next one would be to the conversation council was just having. Fences adjacent to parks, trails, and open space are required to be 60% see-through. A lot of folks want to be next to the trail but also have their privacy. And so, that's a conversation we also have quite a bit. And I appreciate that conversation because that's helpful for us as staff, is that it really is, we call those fence canyons, where you get those big, you know, six-foot tall fences for long stretches. And they do create a sense of unsafe, unsafeness, if that's a word. They're not safe. And so, it is beneficial to have eyes on trails and parks and things like that. And it also helps, to some degree, help foster community, right? Because you get to know your neighbors as they're walking through the trails and that kind of stuff. And one of the questions I was gonna have for council is, is the opacity what was important at the time? Or was it more of a design aesthetic? And so, I think, based on the conversation I heard from council, I think it really is, no, we want those to be open.
Yeah, and actually, to that point, I specifically remember the question coming up about chain link fences. And if you'll note, chain link fences are not prohibited, so it was not an aesthetic discussion. It was more of, you know, that type of discussion, that we're not creating fortresses all throughout Cherry Hills Village.
Yeah. Another provision, which I know has come up in the past, is we do have a provision in the code that specifically allows for trees to be planted in the right-of-way in order to satisfy a design criteria. But I think it gets to the larger conversation and the larger question related to, there are times that the code says that you can increase your opacity if you offset that with some landscape requirements. And folks tend to find that onerous in terms of the installation and the long-term maintenance of the associated landscaping. And then the last one is...
Sorry, Paul, real quick, the reason they find it onerous is because it's outside the backside, the back of their, the back of their fence. It's outside their property.
Correct. It's, it really is, it's outside of their property boundaries. And so...
So, you're talking about landscaping in the right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And in that vein, we do have, one of my neighbors and constituents is here tonight who backs up Colorado Boulevard and asked me to specifically mention Colorado Boulevard as a point of concern for a certain number of people that are... Probably, we already have the trail on the west side, so there's not a whole lot we can do on the west side. But particularly north of Mansfield to Hampton, there are a number of houses that do have solid historic fences that have, have raised the question to me that, are we really getting what we want with the trade-off by a requiring installation of landscape? Because the next piece that comes with that is the irrigation that goes with it. And, and, and so, you know, it was that balance of wanting to open up the community, or at least not make it feel like it was a canyon along the different streets, whether it was a front yard or a backyard or a trail, versus the onus that it puts on the landowner to then install some landscaping and take care of it. So, am I getting it right? I want to make sure I'm not getting anything wrong.
Yeah, it's a landscaping, and it's also just replacing the fence, you know, so that we, we have to do it 75% a year in order to put a decent amount of work. So, you have from a visual perspective, you want to maintain that full capacity. We have to work with the, with the, with the, you know, for...
So, the, the last conversation that we have quite a bit is related to gates. So, within the code, you're allowed to have two gates on your driveway that are four feet tall. You can exceed that four-foot regulation if you do a couple of things. One is related to the actual size of the gates, and most of the time, folks don't have any issues with that. But what we do get questioned on is, is the requirement that those gates have to be 75% see-through. And again, it gets back to that issue of the balancing, the openness within the village and either a perception or a safety concern and a privacy concern. So, those are kind of the laundry lists of things that we most frequently talk to, talk to folks about related to the fence ordinance. From a staff perspective, there's two items that we would like to recommend to council, again, to get kind of a head nod to proceed. One is, this is, the, the table that's on your screen is the only graphic that talks about fences in the ordinance. And it is difficult to understand. It's difficult to put together for a professional, let alone a homeowner or a contractor that's trying to actually meet the fencing requirements of the village. So, one of the recommendations I would make to council is to allow us to draft some visual aids that would help illustrate what areas are what and what fences are allowed in those areas. I think that that would be a tremendous benefit, not only for us as users of the code, but for residents of the village.
You're kind of like your first two, which I thought were great, those first two. I'm like, let's put this in the thing. That was terrific, I thought.
I, and, thank you. We use this image a lot, or these images a lot, when we do talk to folks about fencing. It's just easier to describe graphically than it is in a table format. The second recommendation would be, you can see, because the code says, within a setback, right? That the areas are defined by setbacks, is there are times where there's overlap between two areas. And so, one of the things we'd like to do is create some additional clarity about when you do have overlapping areas, which set of standards apply. So, those would be the two recommendations from staff. And then at this point, that's kind of where...
Is your recommendation gonna be that the greater of the two applies?
That's a conversation I'd like to have with council. I think that that is a best management practice. That would be my recommendation. Right? The, the issue with that is, if you have a corner lot, right? So, your neighbor to the east and your neighbor to the south, those are residential properties. You're allowed to have, and you're not in the R1, you're allowed to have a six-foot privacy fence on those two property lines. Adjacent to the street, let's say it's on the south, that has to be, if it's six-foot, it has to be 75% see-through. You can do some additional, in certain zone districts, you can do some additional landscaping to increase that opacity. But what you end up with is at that southeast corner, you end up with an overlapping of Area 3 and Area 4. And so, if we said the more restrictive in this case, we would have to allow, more restrictive being the increased opacity, where that setback is on that east property line from south to north would have to be an open style. And so, I think that, that's, that's why I want to have additional clarity in the code. And there's gonna be some, some common sense judgments that we're gonna have to make related to that. But there's also scenarios, right? If that neighbor to your east were a trail, let's say, right? Well, in that scenario, we may not want a six-foot privacy fence adjacent to the trail. It would have to apply to Area 7 standards where you can still have six feet, but it has to be 40% opaque. So, that fencing along the trail would all be six-foot, 40%. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it totally does. And I think, I think so long as you put in there some language that the director of community development has discretion over the final decisions or something like that. I, I think I, for one, would be comfortable with that, whether it's Paul or the next person that we hire. I don't want to see every one of these come to, to me, and I don't think P and Z does. And I, I would think that it's gonna happen, but it's not gonna happen every week or every month that we're gonna have one of these apps come in like this, where there's gonna be that overlapping area. I would like to see it maybe be a discretionary thing for our director.
My recollection of what we did...
I don't really want the discretion.
A number of years ago, was it was the more restrictive of any, if there's two that apply. For instance, let's say you had a backyard...
That's what, that's what I just asked him, if that's what it would be.
But a more restrictive would apply. So, if you're, I, I don't know if I can follow your southeast example, but if you have a backyard that ordinarily allows a six-foot fence, but it's along a trail, the more restrictive four-foot applies, not the six-foot. The trick is where you come into play, where you have some corners, in essence. And my recollection of what we did a number of years ago was that we said, wherever there's an overlap, it's the more restrictive, meaning smaller or more open.
The problem with that is, is that you may end up having open rail fencing... The problem with that is, is that you may end up having open rail fencing that makes a turn and then can go into six-foot privacy. And so, you may, on the same plane, if I'm understanding it right, you could end up with two different fence styles, one three-quarters of the way down, and the last quarter of it may be something different because what you're saying, because we're trying to make it the more restrictive of the two measures.
That's correct. And that's, that's the conversation that we have is, again, let's say that there's a street on the south side of, of a property, right? And there's a neighbor on the east side. That property line between those two neighbors can be six-foot, if you're not in R1, it can be six-foot cedar fence. Well, because that street then kicks them into Area 4, let's just say it's R3, because I remember the setback for R3. That first 25 feet from the...
Corner.
From the shared, from the shared corner, that first 20, 25 feet to the north has to be, has to meet the fencing requirements for the, if you go up six-foot, 25% opaque, or 25% solid, 75% see-through. And, and I understand the thought behind that, but it gets difficult to implement.
Well, it's difficult to implement, and it's not practical. If I'm a homeowner, and I'm going to have to put in 40 feet of six-foot privacy and then another 10 feet or 100 feet of wrought iron or, or split rail or something, I mean, on the same exact line, two different fence styles, I, I think that's, to me, it's a little nonsensical. I think...
The theory behind it back then was that, as long as it's close to a, a street, it was that setback that allowed the feeling of it being open. And I lived right next to somebody who's got wrought iron fence for the first 30 yards, and then it goes solid. And it's just two different fence styles, it's sort of front yard, backyard type of idea, but it comes right out to the street. But the idea of what was at least intended in doing the most restrictive, even on stuff like that, was to have opening where, that you had the most open feel, I guess I would say, that goes at, within the, I guess it would be Area 3 in this instance, so that people, you know, it, it, it feels a little, well, you wouldn't do a three, you wouldn't do a three rail, split rail, but you probably would do a six-foot open.
This, this is exactly what I have in my backyard. I hadn't really thought about it like that, but yes, you, what you just described, I have, I have cedar on my back PL, my back fence line, and then it turns cedar for another, I don't know how many feet, and then it goes to wrought iron all the way, the rest of the way, and then wing walls into the house and wrought iron.
So, there is a house on Colorado Boulevard. The couple was here back in, what, October? That young couple, you might remember meeting them. And their fence now, because they had to, is, and it's the, the one side of the fence that faces Colorado Boulevard, some percentage of it, 70% of it, is solid cedar fence, and then it switches to split rail over here. And that's the way they were required to do it by our code. One of the things that we haven't addressed, I guess my concern is not as much about the opacity requirements. I understand that some people don't like that, and they like more privacy. But I really don't want Cherry Hills Village to turn into a bunch of little mini fortresses. What I am more concerned about is the landscaping requirements. And I feel like, so, talk to me about the landscaping requirements, because as I read this now, I'm not sure if I was understanding correctly. Let's say that you have, and let's use an example so that I understand. You're in an R4 lot that backs up to Happy Canyon. You currently have a fence that's falling over. If you go to replace it more than 25%, do you have to meet these landscaping requirements? I felt like when I read this, that you do. It's the landscaping requirements that I think make it really onerous. And I think what that has, the unintended consequence of the landscaping requirements with the 25% rule has resulted in a lot of dilapidated fences that are too onerous to repair.
Because the landscaping triggers irrigation.
And irrigation, and then all, and then add on top of that, that there is no further requirement that that landscaping really be maintained at all.
But doesn't, it says that it's subject to trees or subject to an ongoing maintenance agreement acceptable to the city. And I assume that agreement is going to say you have to maintain them.
Okay, so what happens if I don't?
That I'm assuming the agreement will say you replace them.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't think everybody ends up with a, everybody who plants, we allow people to plant things in the right-of-way. We don't have development agree, or these maintenance agreements with everybody who plants stuff in the right-of-way.
I don't know, I mean, that's...
I know we don't.
I'm going to look to Jay for a little bit of help here. So, when, in order to do, well, it's my understanding, I'll look to Director Goldie to confirm this. If you do landscaping in the right-of-way, that requires a permit from Public Works. And if you are approved for that permit, the city will no longer maintain the area that you have improved in the right-of-way. Director Goldie?
That is correct.
I don't, we don't...
And Jay, is there been a maintenance agreement?
Look, if I put bushes in my front yard in the right-of-way, which they are, because the right-of-way extends to some unknown point in my yard, I don't have a permit for that.
Well, you, you should if, if it's over a certain amount. We don't catch everybody. If it's just grass and bushes, it's usually fine. It's when the trees start getting close to the road. But it's kind of backwards from fence. Fence, it's required. There, you're doing it voluntarily. And once you take over it voluntarily, if you let it go, code's going to come to your house. That's how that's enforced. Same way...
Right, but they're going to come to my house and do what? Okay, so I go cut it down then?
Yeah, but that's...
But then, so what was the point in us requiring them to put it in?
Well, that wasn't a requirement. That was you doing it voluntarily in the right-of-way, which is diff, completely different than you doing it to put up a fence in the right-of-way.
Right, okay.
So, if you do it in conjunction with the fence, now you have an agreement with the city, that you will keep that landscaping.
So, this seems to imply to me that even to build what is allowed, to build a hundred, a, a screening, six-foot screening fence backing up to Happy Canyon, which is allowed, right?
Mm-hmm.
I still have to landscape the right-of-way. That doesn't seem right to me.
Well, let me ask you this question. I'm sorry. I think what we're doing here is we're looking at 163120B2, which is the page after the chart that we were in our packet. It talks about setback and landscape requirements in residential zone districts. So, the way I look at this is, if you wanted to have a solid fence in any of these areas as a replacement, you put like an indent that is further into your own property, not that it sticks out into the right-of-way, it sticks into your property. And in order to break up the visual of a solid fence, you're required to put some landscaping.
That's...
So, let me...
Right.
That is...
Let me take a step back for just a second. So, because to Councilman Eber's point, the landscape requirements are the section that you noted, and those are applicable under the superscript in two places. One, in R4 and R5 zone districts. If you're adjacent to a street that isn't Happy Canyon or a state highway or Clarkson, that's one place that you can use those provisions to go to 100% opacity. The other is, within any setback from a lot line that's a state highway, so University, Hampden, Bellevue. Those are superscript notes two and four in the table. And so, those are the scenarios where landscaping is potentially also required.
So, the way I look at this, the way I understand this is that, on the Happy Canyon, Southmore Vista houses that back to Happy Canyon, because they were already allowed to have a six-foot solid fence, landscaping requirements were not supposed to be applicable to those places along Clarkson and Hampton. It was the interior part of the village where, again, the idea was that we're trying to break up the feel of solid walls. So, I think by, am I right, Paul, that the superscript basically says that along Happy Canyon, you don't have to do landscaping?
You don't have to. Some homeowners may choose to, but you don't have to.
Okay, so you don't have to.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, I just read that wrong back there.
Looking at 163120B2, there's an A, B, and a C.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain to us the difference between those three things?
Yes.
Or when those three things apply? Because the only place where I see subject to an ongoing maintenance agreement is C2. I'm, I'm guessing that's there for a reason, as opposed to not being an A or B.
Yes.
If you can just distinguish those three things.
Sure. So, based on the table, right, the table says that here is the opacity that you're allowed. In a couple of exceptions, you can increase that opacity if you meet this section we're talking about now. Letter A, you have to be, and I'm going to try and say it in a manageable way, so ask questions if you have them. You have to have, that fence must be set back at least four feet from the right-of-way line, and it has to have two evergreen shrubs per, two evergreen shrubs, shrubs per 100 linear feet of that frontage, okay? So, you can't put it right on the property line. You have to set it back at least four feet and do some landscaping. Letter B is, I call this the serpentine provision, right? It's a way to allow the opacity, but try and break up that fence canyon effect that we had alluded to earlier. And it gives you certain dimensions that you have to go a certain, you have, your indent, if you will, has to be a minimum distance. And then there has to be a, there's a window of how far that indent has to go before it can come back to the property line. And in that scenario, those indents have to have landscaping. Okay? Letter C is a three-parter. Set back 25 feet from the edge of the pavement of the adjacent paved road, or 40 feet from the center line of the adjacent unpaved road. So, if your road's paved, you have to set it back 25 feet. If it's not paved, it has to be set back 40 feet from the center line. The second provision is, and this is the one that requires the agreement, because this is the provision that allows for landscaping in the right-of-way. And to Director Goldie's point earlier, if there's landscaping in the right-of-way, the city, with a few exceptions, does not maintain that landscaping within the right-of-way.
So, just to be clear, in A and B, the landscaping is on your own property because you've set the fence back?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, I'll tell you the complaints that I hear.
Wait, I'm sorry, just, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, keep...
Go through, so you, you talked about C1.
So, talk about C2 and C3, just so that we, or did you...
So, yeah, okay. So, C2 is the one that requires the agreement for landscaping within the right-of-way. It says that you can, well, let me read it, make sure. Landscape area between the street and the fence is provided with street trees planted at a density of one tree for every 20 to 30 linear feet of fence, as determined by the director, given the type of planting size proposed. So, this says that you, you can, the city will allow you to install landscaping in the right-of-way as long as you get your, your right-of-way permit from Public Works and the city manager agrees to a maintenance plan that you have to maintain that landscaping in the right-of-way. I'll be honest with you, we don't, we don't see...
Trees, not bushes.
That's right. We don't, we don't see folks volunteer for this compliance very often.
Right, and because you can do, you only have to do two of these three, right?
Correct.
And so, three is...
I'm sorry?
Three little i under C, just follow through that.
Yes. Um, this is, this requires landscaping, but it does not allow you to have that landscaping within the right-of-way. It has to be on your private property.
Okay, so you only have to do two of, two of those three.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, you only have to do two of those three.
So, just for clarity, the code says that you have to meet one of A, B, or C. If you select option C, you have to do two of those three criteria.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is if you want to have more opacity than the code, than the standard under the code.
That's correct.
So, if you go with whatever the opacity is that the code requires, this doesn't even come into play.
That's correct.
Well, so that's interesting, because that, that isn't what, I guess, the people who have brought this issue up to me have said. And I'm using the Happy Canyon as an example. You know, there, and the, the challenge that I think we run into is they say, well, why can everybody on Quincy have their solid fence? And it's like, well, because Quincy has a bunch of trees on it, which, by the way, were planted and maintained by the city. And we're requiring these other people to plant the trees and maintain them themselves. So, that's one of the reasons, because Quincy meets the 25 feet from the edge of the pavement, and it has a bunch of trees there. And so, it does, they don't think that seems fair. But, so, are you telling me that someone who backs up to Happy Canyon can have, in R4, can have 100% opaque?
Six-foot cedar privacy fence.
Six-foot fence.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
With no additional, okay. They, they were told that they couldn't. I, I'll go back to them and tell them that was...
Good news.
Did they maybe have a taller fence?
No, it's, I, no, I drove...
The other, the other, I guess, bit of information I would offer to council is, right, these are city regulations. Some developments within the village have fencing regulations. Those fencing regulations may be more restrictive than the city. I don't know what the scenario is for that area.
No, their scenario was that their HOA wanted to replace the fences with a brick wall, and they were told that they couldn't do it.
I don't know if it meets that setback requirement.
Well, that's, but it, but what I'm hearing is that it doesn't have to. It's, it's allowed. It doesn't have to meet any of those...
If you, if you're, so, again, Area 6, within any setback from a lot line that's also a right-of-way line for South Clarkson Street or East Happy Canyon, you can have a six-foot, 100% opac, opacity fence.
Yep. And with no, but the max opacity is footnote four.
Which applies to Area 5, the maximum opacity in Area 5.
Subject, no, it's subject to the section of B2 below.
Yep, that's Area 5, so it's not Area 6.
No, Area 6, max opacity, there's a sub, a four right there.
Not on mine.
Not on mine.
You were going to have different, look at the other, different sheet.
Okay, but this, what blue one? This blue one?
Oh...
Okay. So, what is this that I'm, what's Exhibit A that I'm looking at?
Well, it must have been a typo. That's all I can say. Is because, you're right, because this is printed directly from the code, and there is a subscript 4 within the code that says that if you have 100% opacity, then you have to meet that section.
I swear I looked into this for this resident. I swear I did.
No, you're, you're exactly right.
They were subject to this. And it doesn't meet the 25-feet setback, and so they would have had to either create the zigzag, or, and they would be required to landscape on the backside of it.
But where, where, so where, where is the error? Is it in Exhibit A, or is it in...
No, it's in, it's in the staff memo. Exhibit A is printed directly from the code.
This is source document.
It's Exhibit A.
Well, yeah, but there still could have been an error. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is, is, was that an error? Is it an error in our code? In other words, did we intend to have superscript 4 apply to Area 6? Was that the intention? Was the code written correctly? Or is that an error versus this?
Well, I don't remember what the original discussion was.
And, and folks, maybe, maybe Paul needs a minute to, maybe we need to give him a minute to do some research.
No, 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 I know, and that's why, but I've, it was my question, so let me just go a little further. Because again, if you read the thing, it's like, okay, Area 6, max opacity, 100%, 100%. Then you go down to 4, and it says, well, actually, what does it say?
Well, it says you can have 100% as long as you meet these things.
A connection, no, it says, it's right here.
It's at the top of Page 2.
It says, subject to, to Section B2, so go to the next page. It says, subject to section B2, so go to the next page.
Ah, there it is.
Footnote 4.
But isn't that 2B and not B2?
So I guess it could be then. Okay, so anyway, so, yeah, go ahead then, Paul, I mean... Well, because I will say, what's in the memo makes sense to me. What's in the code doesn't.
So, so, looking online, I believe what's in the exhibit is correct.
Right.
Okay. So let me jump in and say that, at least when it came through PTRC, Clarkson and Happy Canyon and state highways were given, in essence, a pass.
Right, that's what I remember.
Period. They could continue with six-foot solid, no landscaping requirements, is my recollection of the way we did it. Because they were, in essence, the edge of the village.
Right.
And we were trying to address people's concerns about the feel of the interior of the village. Now, whether or not, you know, people like the Waxers...
But we do require that along Bellevue, we require it along University. I mean, a lot of those fences are built that way already. I'm assuming because we required it, but maybe they just wanted to build it that way. I don't know.
But it does make sense. I mean, take University out of it just for a second, and you sit back and you go, it makes sense, Clarkson, Happy Canyon, Hampton, and Bellevue. Why would we care what the hell it looks like on the outside of those fences? I mean, it just seems like you gotta be able to build whatever the hell you want. I mean, that seems to me at the end of the day. Now, University, probably the same thing, it's a state highway, but, you know, it's a, it's different, right? But certainly on the perimeter of the village, and there's, you know, all kinds of reasons why you can say, hey, you know, build a solid fence, it's okay.
Director Goldie, wouldn't, wouldn't that thinking explain the difference in our maintenance, city maintenance requirements along Quincy compared to, for example, Happy Canyon? I mean, the idea being that Quincy is, the city's willing to invest and spend its time and resources on that because it has a direct impact on the overall view of the quality of life in Cherry Hills Village, whereas the backside of Happy Canyon doesn't make that same contribution, therefore, we don't want to spend city resources on that.
But we do.
Well, but not, not if, not if...
If, it doesn't matter what street, if you improve that, you maintain it. So like, about half of Colorado, half of Quincy, we don't maintain because people have either voluntarily improved that, or had to improve it to put a fence up. And just for the record, the exhibit is the correct one. Happy Canyon does have that applicable section.
Well, and I want to, so I think you're right, that the idea was that those get a pass, but I think the pass for, particularly for the state highways, was that they get to go to eight feet. They get to go to eight feet, totally opaque, but we required, but we wanted it to, I mean, I don't, I don't, but that was why the landscaping and the serpentine thing was required. I personally feel like if those, if that little 4 was stricken, I think that would eliminate a lot of my concerns with, and a lot of the issues that I've heard. I'm not sure if it addresses the Colorado one.
It doesn't address Colorado Boulevard.
Take it step by step.
Yeah, but, um...
Mansfield.
But with rear, so those can already go to six feet, 100%.
Unless...
With rear setbacks. Yeah, Area 3, with rear setbacks, or interior side setbacks. Unless, also, I guess, 4 is, no, so it's 4, adjacent. So it's, it's, yeah, it's actually 4, and it can only be...
You can go up to six foot, but then you have to have a 75% see-through.
Yeah, okay.
And round and round we go.
Yes.
I can think of where it says.
The, the first, I would recommend to council that you first tackle the, the superscript 4. And then, I do know that it has been discussed among council, the categories of roads that were basically given that exemption, if you will.
Yes.
There was an initial decision that these are the categories of roads, but there, since then, there have been discussions or complaints that maybe that, which roads qualify to be exempted out should be evaluated. Are there, are there any more that should be included?
That was my next thing on here, are there other streets that we should, that should be lumped into that? But, you know, so I, I do think that eliminating those landscaping requirements, and, you know, let's face it, I remember the discussion, and I'm still there, the chain-link fence discussion. We're not an architectural review board of an HOA, right? We really are not here to dictate aesthetics. If someone, in my opinion, I think the landscaping requirement is backwards. I don't think you should be able to get a more opaque fence if you plant landscaping, because I think the landscaping acts as a fence. It acts as, it fills in opacity by having it be landscaping. So I, if there was a way to, I don't know, incentivize that, you can replace more of your fence if you do it with landscaping instead of, you know, solid fencing. There is a great example along Colorado Boulevard of people who wanted a taller fence, that didn't work out for them, so they built their regular fence, and then they built a wall of really tall evergreen trees right inside the fence.
Right, and I think that's the thing. I mean, what we're trying to do is, is there's a whole master plan aspect associated with an open community, and you're looking at safety versus privacy, okay? And safety, obviously, is always paramount, but it's only with those areas where, I mean, there's degrees of safety, I mean, let's face it. Quincy's a safer road than being on Hampton. I mean, it just is, okay? And so you come down, privacy, there's alternatives. I mean, you can build hedges. And we've basically said, we don't have a problem with hedges all over, which still basically walls you off, if you will, but it's natural. And that's what we're creating is a natural screen. I mean, you know, to a certain extent, we're saying, hey, if we become the Hamptons, we're okay with all those freaking hedges all over the place. But to your point, Katie, and it does make sense, it's like going, all right, if you build a hedge and it screens off that fence entirely, that's important, because that's what we're saying, natural. Yeah, I mean, why, on certain areas, why couldn't you have a fence there at the end of the day? Because at the end, you know, the, the whole thing with privacy is, is again, you can get that. I mean, I have it in my yard, and it's a big, hell, it's not even a legitimate, it's all volunteers, it's all these trees that have grown up and I've treated like a hedge. It's kind of unsightly, but believe me, it provides plenty of privacy.
Nothing stops anybody from putting that hedge on the inside of their property line. In fact, in lieu of a fence.
Right.
So the question is really, what, I think what we were trying to do back in PTRC in the day was to consider it from the right-of-way perspective of a solid fence and the image that it gave, and then being broken up by the landscaping, versus no fence and lots of landscaping has, in essence, the same opacity, but it doesn't give that perception of the canyon being formed. So that's why the idea was having opacity that you could always, you know, on your private side, you could put anything you wanted.
That's why I think my, my concerns aren't as much with the different opacities as much as they are the, the big obstacles we have created to, we disincentivize people to repair their dilapidated fences and replace, because it's just too onerous to do it. And so I think if we took out those landscaping requirements, and maybe, maybe the happy medium is exactly what you were saying, right? If we leave the opacity requirements, then, you praised it really well, Earl, there's privacy and there's safety. I am absolutely concerned with safety. I am less concerned about privacy because you, there are things you can do to create your own privacy on your own property, if you want. There are lots of alternatives for that. And so maybe, you know, if we got rid of the requirements but still required opacity, then people might choose the landscape screening instead of a fence screening.
Right, but then, and, and I think that's right, but then, what are, what are, what are we saying where that applies, though? That, because that's the next thing, that's the step-by-step. It's like, you gotta start looking, get it, and go all the way around the village. Okay, now we're coming into the village with our more traveled streets, and then we're going in even further.
Well, so I think that, I mean, I remember there was a lot of discussion around, you know, the, R5s can be typical suburban privacy fences. And I, I think, I think this mix is okay, the heights and the opacities and whatever. I'm kind of okay with that. Where I'm not okay with is somebody who's allowed to have, you know, who backs up to Happy Canyon, is allowed to have a six-foot privacy fence, they already have one, but now we're saying, you gotta go do all this landscaping. And oh, by the way, now, all of a sudden, we're not going to maintain any of your right-of-way because we required you to do all this landscaping.
No, no, I agree as well.
But I think the disincentive that we talked about to replacing a fence, it, I'm not diminishing the landscaping requirement as what drives the disincentive. I think that, from what I've heard from a number of people who have not replaced a fence is because they like solid fences. It is the opacity issue. Because if you make me open it up, then I'm gonna have to go plant my own landscape, either on the outside and get a city plan, or on the inside and take up part of my backyard. So it's easier for me, because I think the standard is that it's 25% every two years, is on a rotating piece, over the next 10 years, I'm gonna replace 25% now, 25% next year, or two, in year three, 25 in year five, and the final 25% is gonna be in year seven. So it's a, it's a seven-year project to replace a fence so that I don't have to do the landscaping requirements or open up my fence. So getting rid of the landscaping requirement solves one of the disincentives, but it doesn't do anything with respect to, there is a certain group of people who care about the opacity, not the landscaping.
But there, the, the vast majority of people are already allowed to have the opacity that they have. The vast majority, not, Colorado Boulevard is different, but the vast majority of other complaints that I've heard
I think you're right.
are allowed to have the opacity. But now, all of a sudden, in order to replace it with what they currently have, even though it's allowed, they have to go do all this landscaping stuff. So I think we can address, that's, question one is that removing that landscaping requirement from 5 and 6, Areas 5 and 6, and just letting them have that outright would address that. And then the second question, as Chris pointed out, is, are there other streets that should be considered? I remember very vividly the discussion about Quincy. There are some houses along Quincy, in the vicinity of Holly there, that the way the house is situated on the lot, I mean, I, I feel like I could ask for some Grey Poupon as I drive by, it's that close. But Quincy, it turns out, is okay because miraculously meets these criteria. The fences are pretty far back, and lucky for them, the city maintains all those trees. So they kind of got the, the long straw in that deal. So I think we could probably leave Quincy alone, but I think Colorado should be considered. And maybe that's the only one.
I would argue that, like, Colorado on the west side already has the trail. So that excludes consideration, at least on the outside of that. I think I mentioned earlier, the, the area that I really think that is triggered if you're gonna evaluate Colorado Boulevard is from Mansfield to Hampton. Sorry.
From Mansfield to Hampton. I don't think south of Mansfield, on the east side of Colorado Boulevard, you have, I think you only have R1s there already. And, so I don't think that's an issue. But the R, I think it's R3 or R2 that's, R2? 3, that is on the east side of Colorado Boulevard, north of, of Mansfield. But I think I also heard somebody mention earlier, maybe it was Chris, mentioned that somebody talked about Mansfield as a street that should or should not be considered. You know, now we're getting into what, even though on our snow removal plan is considered to be one of our more major streets, but...
But it's R5, anyway, they're allowed to have six feet, 100% opacity, anyway.
On the south side, the north side is R2.
That's true, the north side is not.
Yeah.
So you're saying Mansfield isn't an issue?
Well, the north side of Mansfield might be an issue.
So, my question is, are we saying these streets are an issue because of the amount of traffic? Or the speed of the traffic? Or why are these streets different than Franklin?
See, I don't, I, I think Mansfield is not different. It's a 25-mile-an-hour residential street. But the people who are along the north side of Mansfield have expressed the fact that either for security or perceptions of noise, or whatever, they would like to be able to have solid fences.
Yeah, and I guess I'm asking, why is, why is it different?
Two weeks ago.
Why is that different than, say, Franklin? Or, I mean, I think of Franklin as, as kind of a cut-through street. So how is, I'm not sure how it's different than.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
I'm not sure that, that, that in my mind, Mansfield doesn't meet the test of being considered for, for more changes, but, you know...
So you don't, you don't have many, I can't think of any, actually, houses that back to Mansfield, no, to Franklin, sorry.
Well, there are only a few that back to Mansfield. I mean, most of them are...
They're large lot.
Yeah, the south side, it's, it's all side yards, and that's all R5, so whatever. And the north side, it's probably, there's probably...
One driveway?
Um, there's... Two driveways, three driveways.
A couple of side yard, I mean, there's probably only a total of 20 houses, period.
There's four, there's five driveways on the north side of Mansfield between Colorado Boulevard and...
But you know what? They also are, we'd have to ask, Mansfield might actually be okay because, um, they're, what's item, what's footnote 1?
Katie, I'm just gonna point out the time.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I was just gonna... I want to just real quickly say that you asked a question earlier about two things. One, graphics. I personally think graphics are great. Does anybody have a different opinion on that?
Do that.
And then the second was, within the setback, add some clarity of when it applies. I also think that that is great.
Yes.
And then as far as what streets, maybe we take that out, up again for another day.
Well, and I think, I think we had consensus on moving, removing the landscaping requirement footnote.
I'm not sure we have consensus on that, yeah.
So, Madam Mayor, what I...
I just need to understand it more, but it's gonna have to come back.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what I would recommend is that we schedule a future council agenda item, not a study session, and that we bring back the staff's suggested changes, and then two discussion items along with that.
Yeah.
And we might even be able to have language ready to go, should council choose to act upon those, but maybe not. Maybe there's additional study that's required after that. I, you know, and I think in my mind, especially when considering which streets might be eligible for that consideration, including in the packet, some aerials of all the lots along said stretch would really be a decision-making tool that might really help council. So I think this has been a great conversation. It is such a difficult, I mean, as you could tell by reading the code, it is not an easy section of code. So I appreciate council tackling this with gusto. It may not feel like we got done, but you guys, so much progress was made tonight, so, thank you, Paul.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for that discussion. It is 6:34, and we will call the regularly scheduled meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's been a change in the council agenda. Graves Consulting was not able to be here today due to inclement weather, so we'll move on to audience participation. So that Graves' presentation will be rescheduled.
I think there's some options available, and I'm gonna actually ask the human resources manager, Charme, to come up and... And I'm going to actually ask the human resources manager, Charms, to come up and discuss that real quick.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Good evening. With, there are some options with the consultant. She could email you the presentation. It is just an overview of the process, so no recommendations are available at this time for any questions or comments. Another option is, there could be two volunteers to represent city council and do a virtual meeting with Ms. Graves to go through that presentation.
How time-sensitive is this matter?
We were hoping to have this project complete by the end of August to be in line with our budget process.
Which means it's
Right, so, yep.
It's important that we get this done soon.
And are there any decisions that have to make out, come out of this presentation? It's just an information.
It's just informational, yep. So to allow you
What is the pleasure of council? Would you like everyone to receive the presentation?
Absolutely, yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Would it be possible for us to receive it and have you walk us through it in case there are any questions that we have? Or would you not be able to answer?
You can always contact me and I can answer any questions that I can. Otherwise, I can pass those questions along to our consultant.
Okay, so it sounds like that's the consensus, if she would just email the presentation and then we can take a look at it and if you have questions, please direct them to Director Duchesne.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to audience participation. No one has signed up, but of course, we don't stand on ceremony. Would anyone like to say anything? No, okay, seeing none. There are no members of city boards or commissions present. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Staff is requesting that we remove an item from consent. In the unusual move, yes.
Okay, yes.
So staff is requesting that item 7E be removed.
Okay, 7E is removed, any other?
I'm requesting that the minutes be removed.
Okay, 7A is also removed.
And 7B.
D or B?
B, B as in boy, and I don't have to say E because it's already been removed.
Okay, so A, B, and E have been removed. That leaves us with 7C and D.
Okay, move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item A, B, and E.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Moving back then to the minutes, item 7A.
I just had a small change to the minutes. On the second page, the last sentence, Counselor McGuire stated she would like to see the fee agreement reflect the billing increments, not the fee increments. That's all.
All right. There, the minute, a proposed amendment has been made to the minutes, is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes with the edit that, bottom of page two, last sentence, we changed the word fee to billing.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, and we move to the item 7B, the 2022 audited financial statements.
Yeah, and I don't have any, obviously, corrections, but I've got questions. I mean, it's a big deal, the audit, so. One of the questions I had is, is that, you know, under land, they had, you know, we're down there at 18,900,000 and I presume, and I think based on the note one, that's at cost. So our cost of our land is what generates that, right?
That's correct, land is presented at cost.
And so then, when the sale of 90 Mead goes through, it's going to reduce that by 1.9 million, but our cash is going to go up by 4 million.
That's exactly right.
So once that transaction is done, our balance sheet is going to substantially improve just by the virtue of that transaction.
Very good point, yes, it is.
The other thing, which I did have a question on here on page 15, it talks about, and this, I was confused by this, under restricted number two, capital projects fund, the fund balance, and this fund is restricted for capital expenditures. That can't be right. The capital fund is funded by the general fund and if we ever overfund the capital fund, it ought to be able to come, and I think it can come, right back to the general fund. I don't believe that once we transfer the funds into the capital fund that it's restricted to stay there. And if it is, hence even more, my thing that I raised during our, during our retreat where I said, we need to stop that policy, we need to stop doing that automatically and we need to leave it in the general fund until such time as the capital fund needs it. But stepping back, the first thing is, is I don't think number two is correct, but I'm stand ready to be corrected.
Well, I actually asked that question, but I think that restriction is, is very old and it's in the auto work papers, I'm not sure exactly where that came from. But there is a restriction on capital projects. Then the other capital projects restriction is the capital projects fund, which has some residual monies, funds from the COPs, COPs, projects. So there are two different buckets of restrictions there.
And I did see that on the COP ones and I thought, oh, that's interesting, it's got 690,000 bucks sitting in there and it's like, that's something to talk about, but the, and that's what I didn't know is when they talk about the capital projects fund, I presume that was, you know, capital projects fund, the one that we always transfer our overages to. And again, in the sounds
The one restriction that's in the general fund, the restricted one you're referring to, Mr. Holland, is probably going to be a subject that council discusses when we talk about
Right.
The capital projects fund, because right now that is blended with the general fund. It's not a standalone, separate fund as it is. But you're absolutely right, that committed fund balance on page three of 690,599 in the general fund, that's what
Right.
The topic would be.
Exactly. And then on page
Well, sorry, but, so to be clear then, I mean, I know these are already the audited statements. I wouldn't want anything to move forward that might then, two years from now, you know, be brought back to say, but wait, you spent money that you shouldn't have because it says here it was restricted. Do it, do we need to clarify that? Is, can we clarify it? Can we?
Well, my sense is, is that, is that the thing that we need to be aware of? And it's like, I'm not certain when funds go into, get transferred in, I think it's at the end of the year. Do you do it like automatic and monthly? But the point is, there are funds in there right now, we know that the capital thing needs that money, but it's going forward at this point in time and continuing, because we, we think we're going to keep building large surpluses. And all of a sudden, at some point, that capital fund, automatically, if it gets it in there, that money's going to need to come back to the general fund. And that's what we don't want to have happen.
So are you comfortable with it saying this for now?
I'm comfortable with it now, and I've gotten my question answered. And I think council's been now informed that, hey, even more, we need to address that policy
Yeah.
to the extent it is a policy, and get that squared away.
We do have the auditor, Mr. Cutler is here as well.
Sure, thank you.
Do you want to further clarify that?
To be restricted, has to be restricted by outside parts.
Could you say who you are? Yeah.
I'm John Cutler for John Cutler and Associates.
Thank you.
So to be restricted, it has to be restricted outside of the city. So that means like, like a sales tax that's been passed by ballot or a grant money. And you, but you can also connect money, which is, you do that, you're not outside. So that's the difference. So what we need to do probably is make sure next year that we get all the buckets right. But that's the, that's the main difference of those two. And that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
That is helpful and you're, well taken, we need to get this straight.
Yeah, we do, and I, you know, right, I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, and what we did, what I've seen in the past, what I've done in the past is, when council adopts a budget, they can also adopt a committed fund balance because that's within your purview as part of that budget adoption process.
Makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Then the other one was just a question, and on page 22, it talks about our general obligation debt. And it talks about our COPs and it shows the 1231 2021 balance of 9,915,000 and on 1231 2022 of 9,500, I'm sorry, it, that is correct. I screwed up that nine and five, I thought it was going the other way.
I thought we had a time, it was about you.
Never mind, it's all, it's all good. I thought I saw something I didn't understand.
Answer your question, yeah, that's great.
So it's all good. So I don't have any more comments and I'm comfortable in the audit very good.
Mr. Wheel?
And terrific.
Thank you. Yep, Mayor Pro Tim Wheel.
Thank you. I'm not sure I'm as clear as Earl is on what the amount in the reserve, in the capital fund balance, is that restricted or not restricted?
I think it goes back a ways and maybe over time, the restriction kind of went away. It maybe was funded way back with like some kind of tax that was approved by ballot, but maybe that's what we need to look at. We need to like make sure that that's still correct. If it's not, then it should either be committed or unrestricted.
And see, and my sense is, and here's the deal, is, is my bet is, I don't know, my bet is, is that previous audit statements had that verbiage in there and it just flowed over. I do not believe that there is a separate resolution or policy document that exists that does that. And I'm prepared to stand corrected, just as I was prepared to stand corrected in 90 Mead Lane that we wouldn't get a better offer.
So, I, I would just, you know, and, and look to Director Farman as well. This was previously identified going all the way back to February at our budget retreat, whether the council retreat, as an item to, this was one of the two topics that council requested that we bring back to you related to our budget process, the other one being our reserve policy and, and fixing that. Both of those topics are on your agenda. So this is already scheduled to be addressed.
Terrific.
No, 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 this year.
Yeah, before budget.
Yeah, August 1st will be the capital project discussion. We have that calendar with council.
And then the, but the reserve policy, I think, is either October or November.
Yeah, I think that's November 7th.
So August and October or something, or November, yeah.
Randy, you
Okay, move to approve the
Oh, wait, are there any other questions or comments?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say was, and the main reason I had a lot of these is I wanted council to know that the financial liaison is paying attention. I know Counsel Blum would appreciate that.
Liaising, he's liaising.
Happy to yield to you.
And that makes me happy as well that somebody looks at these.
Yeah, we really appreciate that.
All right.
Okay, move to approve the audit of the financial statements in the city of Cherry Hills Village for year-end, December 31, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, moving to item 7E, Resolution 27, Series 2023, approving a non-budgeted transaction in accordance with the city's purchasing policy, Chief Lyons.
Real quick, just a quick note, the, the actual resolution itself had a whereas clause. When it was written, assuming that we were going to be having an agreement in place with Kent Denver, that agreement is there in principle. I think, Chief, if I'm missed, if I'm not mistaken, they're still working on signatures. But because of that, the actual language of the whereas would then need to be changed because we don't have a final agreement yet. And I believe general counsel has a suggested wording.
Sure, of course. So it's going to be the third whereas clause where it says the city in Kent have entered. We're going to remove and replace the wording have entered with are in negotiations to enter. That's it.
Are in negotiations.
So where it says whereas the city and Kent have entered, you would remove have entered and replace it with are in negotiations to enter.
Katie, I
Go ahead.
I have a question on that. How long does it take now to go ahead and hire that staff person you're looking at? What's the timing on that?
Typically, the, the time to hire a new police officer is about four months from the date of posting to the date of swearing in. In this particular case, we're quite fortunate. We have an incumbent member of our staff who was once sworn and moved into a civilian position, who was asked to come back to a sworn position. So this body has already been hired.
So do we have access during the period, the time that Kent is not using the SRO, that we can use them for other purposes, whatever you need?
Yes, particularly around their academic breaks, so spring break, fall break, summer break. When they're not needed at the school campus, they come back to the city as a resource.
Thank you.
And let me just ask real quick, you know, I, I know that we're very close on this agreement, but what happens if it falls through? Then we can just undo this appropriation?
Correct, yeah, it would just remain status quo. The, I, I spoke with the administrators at Kent today that, as the, as the manager mentioned, we are, we've agreed in principle. My understanding is they're having trouble locking down their general counsel for a wet signature just because of breaks and things. But as of today, they expect it to be done by the end of week.
Okay.
And, and then I had a couple of questions as well that, and and Exhibit B wasn't attached, so now I think I probably understand why because you're in the process of negotiating, so you didn't have anything to attach. Because Exhibit B never was attached, which was the draft agreement, which probably would have then answered all of my questions, including that one. I had the same one kind of that, that Katie had. But will that agreement be just for a year basis? I mean, and then, and then it'll, it'll, is it an automatic renew?
It's an automatic renewal and if either party decides to terminate, it's with six months notice.
Okay.
Similar to the same agreement we have in place with St. Mary's.
Exactly, and presumably within that, within that agreement, it would cover exactly what Katie's point was, or was it Dan's, any, whoever's it was that said, hey, we get to use this. It was Al. Utilize the services of their officer when they're not on duty at the, the school, et cetera. That's all covered with inside of the agreement.
That's all, that is all covered within the agreement. And again, they're paying 100% of the cost and yet we were able to retain some of that benefit in their uncommitted time from campus.
And so just, and this is kind of a minor thing, right? But so, it's a year-long agreement that we've got with Kent Denver. We're appropriating an additional 70,000, which is going to take us through the end of the year. But we're contractually committed with Kent Denver through June of next year.
Yeah, so the
Unless we could cancel it at the end of the year. It just gets back to this whole thing about, which I've always had problems with, is that, you know, we can't, we can't commit things and only exactly.
It's future councils.
I'm always, I mean, this seems like one of them, which is, you know, that's going to be, unless, unless that agreement says, hey, on December 31, we can cancel the agreement or you can cancel it at any time, as opposed to you can elect not to renew it, we're actually committing, you know, the council that steps in on January 1st, 2024.
Which is nobody because we don't have an election this year, but
Yeah, but I mean, but it's a, but you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, and just to sort of clarify
So in that regard, all contracts should terminate as of the end of December in any given year, I guess, right?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't think so. I think that it's got more to do with this other thing about binding future councils and that sort of thing. I mean, the point is, is the city enters into agreements and I can't imagine that unless we had the right to do it, and even if we, unless it was done explicitly upfront, the city of Cherry Hills would never breach a contract with, with a, with a counterparty without good cause. And so therefore, it is, it is a commitment beyond December 31 at any point in time if it goes on.
Mayor Pro Tim Wheel.
I don't, I mean, we don't have the attachment, but typically, they say that it can be canceled by the city with or without cause at any time. So that would, in effect, provide for us not to be encumbering if there was some reason that
If that's in there, you're right.
Is that in there, do we know?
I thought it was a six-month notice, right, Chief?
Well, I, I think all of these contracts will have Tabor language as well, so it's subject to annual appropriation. So there is a way out because of Tabor and what you're discussing now, but there usually is that language in all of our contracts.
Well, and I guess, I guess the message is if it's not in there
It needs to be, yeah.
Because I, because personally speaking
It's all in all the contracts, so that's another avenue the city could pursue.
But that, that's the thing is, as Counsel Wheel said, it should be in there because I don't like the idea of us saying to our counterparties, where we have not talked to them explicitly about it, to going, you know, if it came to, hey, hey, we're going to invoke Tabor, we're out of here, even though we never had the right to do it upfront. And Josh, you're not, but I mean, if you talk to Kathy, that Counselor Holland was, she'll sit there and go, yeah, he brings this up all the time. She'll know what I'm talking about. I have a problem with this and our contract should be explicit with regard to this and we don't want to sit back and rely on, not that we couldn't do it if it was in the city's best interest, but we don't want to sit there and rely on that get-out clause, at least that's my view.
Well, I, I wouldn't call that a get-out clause, though. That's, that is the commitment of future councils. If future councils choose not to make the appropriation, then they can do that and then therefore we are not binding them to anything, so.
I understand that, but that's, that ought to be made explicit as opposed to them coming around and doing it the other way because I, I struggle with that. And a new council comes in and just sits back and there was a previous commitment and they just take it away.
Well, but I think the answer
It needs to be, it needs to be expressly provided.
I think the answer on this is that our attorneys can probably say, this is the way it's done in every other state in Color, or city in Colorado. Here's the magic language that you put in all your contracts. Either make them terminate at the end of the year or put in this other language. But we don't need to come up with this language. We know that we don't want to bind future councils and now let's just punt it over to Josh and say, you know, come up with the language for us.
Make sure it's in there. I'm sure it's in there.
Don't we already have that in the language with St. Mary's? It's already covered.
I'm sure it's probably in there.
Chief has the answer.
Chief has the answer.
Yeah, it, it certainly is in the contract language. This has been vetted numerous times by our legal counsel to Councilmember Holan's, Holan's point. That's in there. The, the outline around the six-month notice, absent some of those circumstances are in there. And just to clarify, so it does look a little different in terms of the way we essentially bill for that reimbursement for them. It is done in six-month increments, simply because their fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30. So we, normally, we would do January 1 through December 31, but because they run a different fiscal year, we're basically billing 50% for the cost of an officer in 2023, and 50% of the cost of an officer in 2024, which will be at a greater cost. So actually, it's the benefit to the city that we're not selling ourselves short in terms of that contractual reimbursement from Kent Denver.
Counsel Wheel.
Jason, you triggered a thought that occurred to me when I read this the first time, and I, I forgot it. The billing for this, is it monthly? Is there much float involved, or how does that work?
So essentially, the, the appropriation will be granted in six-month increments. So the city will appropriate the $70,000 for the last six months of this year. And the, then we'll bill Kent Denver for those six months. And then again, right after the first of the year, we'll bill them for the, the first six months of 2024. So it'll be done in six-month increments.
Is it done in arrears or in advance?
Doug, do you know how we're planning on doing that? Are we going to do it in advance?
Probably in advance, because we're going to bill them now.
Actually, we do it in advance. So in January, we build St. Mary's for the rest of their fiscal year.
And I, I don't, a follow-on question. I don't want to make an assumption. The, the $70,000 per six months, that includes like the officer, the car, you know, some overhead for equipment and things like that?
It includes the officer, their, their benefits, their salary, their full salary, training, equipment. And I believe that's it. Yeah, all costs except for the, the car, which we, we just use out of our existing fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then I'll entertain the motion.
Okay. I move that we approve, I move to approve Resolution 27, Series 2023, with an edit to the third whereas clause, deleting the phrase "have entered" and replacing it with "are in negotiations to enter", to approve a non-budgeted transaction in accordance with the city's purchasing policy.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is to continue the public hearing from June 2nd, 2023, regarding repealing and then reenacting building and fire codes. And we'll just leave it at that and not read the rest.
I was going to be super impressed if you read the whole thing.
Yeah, no, not this time.
Good evening again, Mayor Brown and members of City Council. As was just alluded to, this is the second and final reading on the adoption of the 2021 building codes, including the fire code and the 2023 electrical code. Also here, who will present here in just a moment, is Mr. Steve Thomas from Shumskota, the city's building consultant. Just to refresh council's memory, council had a study session April 4th of this year and first reading on May 2nd of this year. Council was presented with some information related to the adoption of the, of the codes I just referenced. There was some, what I would call questions related to certain requirements of code, or, you know, certain circumstances. You know, how would the code treat, you know, a certain scenario like this? But nothing that would suggest any additional exemptions or any additional requirements that, that are already proposed as part of the information to council this evening. And at this point, I do want to invite Mr. Thomas up. I've said this before, I'll say it again, because he's earned it. Mr. Thomas, he probably doesn't like it when I call him that. Steve from Shumskota really is one of the national experts on the building code. He travels the country all through the year, teaches building codes, sits on the code council. And so we are very lucky to have him as part of our community development group. And Steve has been the city's building official since 1989, so he knows the village very, very well. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thomas.
And you're probably tired of me talking about building codes. So I'm just going to be here to answer any questions or comments that you may have. How's that sound?
Does anyone have any further questions or comments? I know Counsel Eber.
The only question I have is on page three of our memo. It talks about that the International Energy Conservation Code, it has a statement in there that says if we are forced to adopt the Colorado Energy Code Board, it goes beyond the requirements of the IECC, it says which will further reduce or increase the cost of construction. Do we have a percentage guess at this point of what increase is caused by that code?
It depends on who you talk to. Some people say about 10%, some are saying 20% cost. The two big things is solar-ready, so every home would have to be built so that you could add solar panels to the roof, those kind of things, as well as some electrification requirements, things like that. So that's, the numbers we're hearing is 10 to 20%. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? I just would like to note for any people watching, you know, these are pretty big codes. This is not the only discussion we've had about them, so please don't be concerned that there's not a lot of discussion right now.
Yeah, and to be clear, real quick, Mayor, just along those lines, this is continued from June 6, which was continued from May 2, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the first reading was on May 2, and then the second reading was continued. But yes, on May 2, we had a very lengthy discussion.
Right.
Okay, so thank you for being here. I will ask for any public comment. There's no one signed up to speak regarding the building codes. So I will now close the hearing at 7:03 PM and call for the motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 2, Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance to repeal and replace with amendments, Articles 1 through 9 of Chapter 18 of the municipal code concerning building and fire regulations on second and final reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take the vote? Counsel Eber?
Aye.
Counsel Holan?
Aye.
Counsel Wheel?
Aye.
Counsel Sheldon?
Aye.
Counsel Blum?
Aye.
Counsel McGuire?
Aye.
And next. That was the whole motion? Okay, that was really short. Okay, next up is the, is Council Bill 5, Series 2023, repealing and replacing Section 4-4-30 of the municipal code concerning local retail sales tax licenses on second and final reading. Director Workman, no, Farman.
Yes.
I was a little surprised. I was looking at the wrong, I'm like, really?
You might screw that up.
All's going to talk to us about sales tax, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Good evening, City Council. We do have a second reading on a council bill this evening regarding retail sales tax licensing, and it would repeal and replace Section 4430 of the city code. Again, here is the 2A ballot implementation timeline that council has followed over the last two months. And we are on schedule, and tonight, if we do get the council bill adopted, we will be completing, completing Phase 2 of this project. And there have been no other changes to this timeline. Tonight's council bill is recommended, of course, we did have, the ballot was approved by citizens, and so the city's definition of engagement in business and economic nexus was subsequently adopted by the city code and city council. So that is one reason that we are looking at sales tax licensing this evening in order to be consistent with that, those definition updates that council adopted earlier this year. This council bill would also create an obligation for remote businesses, as well as businesses with a physical presence in the city, to have a sales tax license. The bill also would comply with the Senate Bill 22032, which is a state senate bill. It goes into effect July 1. And it actually prohibits local jurisdictions from requiring a separate license process and fee to remote retailers. So that, if the city does require a license, the city will also use state licensing information to ease that burden on the remote retailer. The city is further recommending administrative relief for the retailer by recommending automatic renewal and no expiration on these sales tax licenses. And in addition, residents conducting garage sales or occasional sales of produced food or beverages that are exempt from sales tax collection would also be exempt from this licensing provision. And lastly, you will see on the next agenda item, staff proposes no fee at this time, which will coincide with that fee resolution tonight. And the business licensing regulations are actually in a different city code, Chapter 6. So those are unchanged at this time, so we're just dealing with the sales tax licensing. And if this bill is approved on second reading, as I stated, Phase 2 will be completed. And Phase 3, related to the intent or purpose of the sales tax code that was proposed earlier by Mayor Pro Tem Wheel, that would be discussed in July or August. We'll take a look at council's calendar and put that on the calendar. Due to priorities, we'll arrange that. And then discussion of compliance and enforcement regulations, which would be Phase 3. We have deferred that to next year, when we have some more data collected from the remote retailers mainly. And with that, we do have a recommended motion here for second and final reading. I can answer any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a, a quick comment. I want to thank Counselor Wheel for your efforts and all the rest of council and staff, presuming this gets approved tonight on second reading. It's a fine step for our city, so thank you.
Represents a lot of work, so yes, I echo that. All right, well, seeing no other comments, Counselor Wheel.
Okay, I move to approve Council Bill 5, Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, repealing and replacing Section 4-4-30 of the municipal code concerning local retail sales tax licenses on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take the vote? Counsel Eber?
Aye.
Counsel Holan?
Aye.
Counsel Wheel?
Aye.
Counsel Sheldon?
Aye.
Counsel Blum?
Aye.
Counsel McGuire?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to laws. Moving on to Resolution 28, Series 2023, amending the fee schedule, Director Farman. As previously alluded to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and City Council, as previously alluded to. We do have a proposed amendment to the city's fee schedule. Staff reviews the city's fees annually, and at this point, we are proposing one change. That was discussed earlier this evening with the Council Bill 5, second reading. And we are proposing a zero fee for sales tax licenses, and also to remain at the $25 for annual business licensing. So even the, the businesses with the physical presence would not have to pay that sales tax license fee. And we think that's more than fair at this point in time. And with that, I do have a recommended motion, if council would like to review that. I have, I can answer any questions as well.
Are there any questions or comments? I just like to save the record that completely, you know, I've raised this concern over the discussions about this issue, and I'm really pleased with the way we have moved forward to not discourage our small businesses or make things too onerous for them. So thank you for that. I'll entertain the motion. Oh, yeah?
Well, I think also compliments to Doug for a great job, you know, carrying the ball, complicated, dealing with state and all kinds of bureaucracy and everything else. It's great to have this going over the finish line.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a team effort and couldn't have done it without City Clerk Laura Gillespie as well.
Yeah, you're right. That was an omission.
And Kathy Eckman, and her lawn.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution 28, Series 2023, amending the fee schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Council Bill 6, Series 2023, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain of city-owned property known as 90 Need Lane on second and final reading. And that's Director Goldie.
Please hold. I've got, we're all sharing a computer now. Supposed to be easier unless you're the last guy in line. There's too many in here.
It usually helps if all four of you try and do it at the same time. It goes faster that way.
Oh, there we go. All right. Nope, that's. Well, that's 66.
The good news is, the only slide is your recommended motion. So.
If I can find it. Well, let's forget that.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's my, I think we can, I think knowing that you have the recommended motion in front of you, we could probably tackle it.
Two small changes. Now I've even lost my paperwork, all flustered over here. So we did make the two recommended changes that council asked for during the first reading. I don't know. I'm having a heck of a time over here. I don't, I just lost everything.
Would that be where we added amended before Resolution 5?
Yes.
And added bargain and sale, and the blanks in the last whereas clause and in Section 2?
Yes, thank you. Does Director?
If you guys could help me find anything over here, if there are any questions. Those are the only changes that were made from the first reading.
I, does anyone have any questions?
No, but I was, I was out of town when you guys were doing this, and I just want to send out big props to all of you and to staff, again, for this topic. The, the results appear to be terrific, so we get to a closing. Good job, everybody.
And I assume that due diligence is moving along.
Exactly. What's the status?
About issue?
Yes, the, the buyer is moving all that along. We're seeing things from the title company and, and responding as needed. So the one thing we are looking at is if we are going to have Mayor Brown be the signator or Jim Thorson. So we'll figure that out and get that changed on the documents. But yeah, everything is moving forward as planned.
All right. So hearing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 6, Series 2023, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain city-owned property, 90 Need Lane, on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take the vote? Counsel Eber?
Aye.
Counsel Holan?
Aye.
Counsel Wheel?
Aye.
Counsel Sheldon?
Aye.
Counsel Blum?
Aye.
Counsel McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. There is no new business. We'll move on to reports. I'll keep the mayor's report brief. I know that we're all recovering from Senate Bill 213, and it still is the talk amongst all the various organizations, CML, Metro Mayor's Caucus, Arapahoe County, every group, Dr. Cog. And just as a brief update, what we pretty much know is that it is going to come back. It is most likely going to come back as a series of individual bills, which will probably make it more challenging for us, because part of the failure of Senate Bill 213 was that it was so big that everyone had something to hate. And when you break it down into smaller pieces. And when you break it down into smaller pieces, then you're isolating, you know, individuals that have opposition. So there are very concerted efforts to put forth a solution that these very, that we collectively, and when I say we, I mean municipalities and local government in general, feel that we can support, things that we think would advance the addressing the issue of affordable housing, but do it in a way that respects local government authority and frankly, do it in a way that we feel might actually be successful. So there is work being done on that, and stay tuned. I think, I'm not sure that a champion has emerged for who the ball carrier is going to be, and that's something we do need to work on, but no one is less resting on their laurels. And so I will keep you apprised as things develop. I think some of the things that have been talked about are proposing some sort of statewide housing needs assessment study, first understand the problem before we start proposing solutions, focusing more on incentive-based programs where, you know, cities or municipalities might make changes in exchange for, or commitments, I should say, in exchange for receiving statewide funding or support for those housing initiatives. And just sort of other more voluntary construction defects has come up, you know, trying to address that. So it's transportation funding, those are likely to be the elements of solutions that would be brought forth by this group in hopes that if we can't at le, well, if we can't get the governor's team on board with that, then at least the legislature then has two alternatives. Rather than just asking them to vote yes or no on this, they can weigh which solution they feel might be more effective.
And I think that all sounds good, in particular to work on the various solutions and get things going. But I view that as a separate and an important effort. There's another effort, which I think is important, which is that there is some process, something with regard to saying, hey, whatever is done, local control, home rule authority is sacrosanct. That stake in the ground, I mean, it's almost like going, hey, we could go out and, I'm not proposing it, I'm saying, but it's like, we could go out and amend the constitution again, and we'll do it. I mean, you know, it's basically saying, forget the substance of what's going on.
Yes.
Makes a lot of sense. But irrespective of that, because we don't know how that's going to come out, this still is something that we, the people of Colorado, stand for. And I'd like to know that something's going on with regard, you wanna call it a marketing effort, whatever you want to call it.
No, it's still a very, very strong message. I think that the, and nothing that, nothing that is being proposed or discussed is in any way a compromise on that principle. It's not saying, well, we'll accept some encroachment over here as long as you don't give us, you know, this. No, that is, that's still always the bottom line. I think that the approach, though, is, the concern, again, is that it might be harder to rally enough votes on every single one of these issues unless we provide an alternative, right? And so I think that we're, the strategy is to provide the more effective alternative that doesn't include any encroachment on local control, to give people a chance to really do something to address the problem and perhaps deflect some of the pressure of, we have to do something.
Right.
So, but it's a very important message, so.
If I can, real quick.
Yeah.
Following up on that, I think there are two really important things that we need to do during this semi-lull in the action. And one is, I think that we never should have been in Tier 1. We all think we never should have been in Tier 1. We're 100% residential community. We are in no way similar to all of the other communities of Tier 1. I would like to task our city attorney and all of our brains to figure out what the legal argument is, that when all else goes south, we can rely upon the argument that we don't fit the requirements of a Tier 1 city, which may put us in some other one.
The tears may be completely gone.
But my point is, is a lot of, we are unlike many, we don't have, we just don't look, walk, and talk like all of these other communities, and we shouldn't be treated similarly to many of those other communities. And so that goes, my second point is, there needs to be something that I challenge all of us to come up with. What is going to be our solution that when they say, you're just the non-poster child for affordable housing, and what are you doing to help solve this problem, that we can come back and say, we suggest doing A, B, C, and D as Cherry Hills Village, whether it's, tonight, we backed off a little bit on the forced adoption of some energy standards, but that may be that we may want to move that way at the appropriate time to say, look, we're helping reduce the climate change issues. We're already central to a lot of the communities. Our traffic commute times are very small. We're not part of the problem. Whatever they are that we're all going to come up with, I challenge all of us, and I've been trying to think very hard about what it is that I would propose during this lull to say that we are part of the solution, not part of the problem in Cherry Hills.
No, that is a good idea, and I think the, that question did come up in this past round. My response to that, which certainly doesn't mean it couldn't be improved upon, but my response was always that, you know, every community isn't the answer to every problem. We're a community of six square miles, 6,000 people. We can't solve every single problem. While we may not have a lot of impact on affordable housing, we provide open space, conservation, you know, those things are equally important, and those are things that our community is in a position to do more so than other, you know, communities. So I think two things. One is that there are some things, Proposition 123, which was, it was approved by the voters, and it basically sets up funding for affordable housing, and cities can opt in to participate in that program. Most of the cities who are opting in are cities who are in the housing business themselves. They build affordable housing. But one of the things that opting in to Proposition 123 does, as I understand, and Al, maybe you would know more, is that it allows third parties, builders, contractors, developers, to be eligible for money for affordable housing developments in those communities. And so, you know, I don't know that it would cost us a lot to opt in to 123. We don't build housing, so, but if there's somebody out there who wants to build affordable housing in Cherry Hills Village, I would at least like to say that we're not creating obstacles, right? I don't think that person exists, but.
It'd be nice if the developers in Cherry Hills Village could take that money and use it somewhere else, but, Councilman Eber, you raise a good point there. What can we do progressively to try and do on the climate change? Randy brought this up, my memory was back probably in the study session. We talked about electric cars for the police department. I've been doing a little research on that. South Pasadena apparently went 100% electric on their cars. They're saving $80,000 over 10 years, and NYPD just bought 200 electric cars. They're trying it. I looked at a demonstration with the, it's a Mustang conversion modified for police. I think it's something we need to take the first step. If we're going to help on the climate, we can be the leader in this, because I don't know any other communities in the area that are doing that. And I think maybe we need to have a study session on it or something. We can discuss it and let the chief do some more research on how to go down the road. And I know Randy's been.
Yeah, Al, to build on that point, I think I really appreciated the progress and the enthusiasm Jay and Jason toward electric vehicles, but I'd like to ask that we start to move toward and come up with a kind of a plan that says, okay, we're going to go do this on this date, this on this date, because there's grant money out there that we may be missing, maybe not. You know, but I think to get our thoughts organized as to how we might move forward, unless it's not the will of the council, you know, I think would be a good next step, present us with a plan as to how you're thinking about going forward on, both in the world of public works and, well, all the vehicles really, police as well as public works.
And following up, I think, and I looked at, I think with South Pasadena, maybe they get use of our funds too, that enable them to purchase some of these things. So there are funds out there, and I think for both Jay and the chief, we need to look at what we can do to do that, and I think that addresses what Councilman Eber brought up.
And I think that all can be part of the answer to that question. I think water conservation is another one that could all be part of that question because those were all arguments in support of 213. And so while I don't know that we can build a lot of affordable houses here, if we can try to address those underlying issues in our own way, you know, maybe that would help. Okay, that's my report. I'll go to Councilor Wheel.
Well, let me shift gears a little bit because, as you know, we have a milestone occasion here tonight. This is Chris's last official council meeting with us before he heads off on his one-year leave of absence. I think you've done a great job. It's been personally a pleasure working with you and, you know, bright, thoughtful, residents first, and a fun guy as well. So I think all good things. We did not want to, even though you might have been okay with riding off into the sunset thinking about Valencia, we couldn't quite let it go at that. So we drafted a proclamation, which I'd like to go ahead and read into the record. City of Cherry Hills Village proclamation designating June 20, 2023 as Chris Kramer Day. Whereas Chris Kramer has served as the city manager of Cherry Hills Village since August 2020, and whereas Chris Kramer is taking leave of absence during which he and his family will live in Spain, and whereas Chris Kramer has overseen many accomplishments during his tenure as city manager of Cherry Hills Village, including the Quincy Avenue Utility Line Undergrounding Project receipt of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the Colorado opioid settlement, the creation of Southmore Hudson General Improvement District, memorandum of understanding with Cherry Hills Land Preserve for programming of Quincy Farm, High Line Canal Stormwater Conversion Study, ballot issued 2A in the 2020 election regarding the sales tax policy update, overseeing the 2022 master plan update, project protecting Cherry Hills Village interests against land use preemption proposed by Senate Bill 23213, arranging for the sale of 90 Mead Lane, recruiting outstanding personnel to fill open positions, open senior staff positions, and whereas Mr. Kramer has served in a manner which demonstrates integrity, intelligence initiative, and provided the city with a leadership, a leader that listened, mentored, and trusted his staff to accomplish the mission of their respective departments, and whereas city council wishes Mr. Kramer the best of luck during his leave of absence and looks forward to his return in 2024. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Cherry Hills Village recognizes Chris Kramer for his great public service, honors him for his significant contributions to the city, and proclaims June 20, 2023 be designated as Chris Kramer Day in the city of Cherry Hills Village, presented on the regular city council meeting this 20th day of June 2023 and signed by all of us.
Every single one of us. We don't want to make it like you're not coming back, though. Officially Chris Kramer Day.
And maybe ice creams on Chris.
Yeah. We do, thank you to Councilor or Mayor Pro Tem Wheel for really spearheading that effort and, you know, I know that you know how much you're appreciated. We will miss you over the next year, but I know you'll be there, so thank you. Okay, are there other, we'll move to Councilor Holen.
I don't have a report, but I too would like to thank City Manager Kramer. It's been, it's been a pleasure, a short period of time since I've been on council, but I was a thorn in your side before that on various commissions and what have you. So I thoroughly enjoyed our chats and our talks and our philosophical discussions. I wish you and your family all the best on this unique excursion. I'm very, very pleased that we were able to come up with a unique solution that will bring you back here. I was glad to see that in the whereas. And you are coming back, right?
The way the conversation's going, you're having me back, right?
That's, that's it.
I know, we don't want to make him feel like he's leaving.
But it's been a pleasure, and again, I hope that the next year is everything that you and your family hope that it would be, and we look forward to having you back in a year. I will also just say for the record that, again, because, I mean, it's, I'm also very pleased, as we all are, that we've got a great, great replacement, interim replacement to take over your position because you've raised the level of the quality of service in Cherry Hills Village, and I am confident that under former city manager Thorson and future interim city manager Thorson, he'll maintain that high level and hopefully raise it for you to pick up when you come back, so. But thanks, thanks so much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Councilor Eber?
I too want to just add my thoughts and thanks to you, Chris. The only additional item that I would add to the whereas is you have guided the city through COVID, and that's not just surviving, that's thriving. And so thank you for leading this team called Cherry Hills Village during a tumultuous time for all of us and to keep our city in fine shape along the way. Many, many thanks and good luck to you.
Councilor Sheldon?
Okay, well, Chris, I think they've basically said it, so good luck. Let's talk while you're gone. Hope you keep up on your tennis game. I do have a couple other things, and I will throw them out there, and if staff wants to either respond to them right away or maybe during staff reports, or possibly if you need to get an organized answer together and respond at the next meeting or offline, that'd be fine, too. I would like an update on the iPads if we're going to be switching over at some point to iPads. Do you want to, you want to give us an update? Okay, thanks.
So we're working on that for multiple fronts. We have a couple of iPads that we're setting up so that you all can do some testing and see how it works. We're trying to find the best app to use so you can make notes and highlights and that kind of thing, and then working on the policy side of things with Kathy as well.
Great, thank you. I see on our next agenda for the July, I think, 18th meeting that we have a study session for a new noise ordinance for pickle, pickleball. Did I miss something while I was gone? Did somebody instruct staff to study session up for a new ordinance?
I had, I don't know that it's for a new ordinance. I had a constituent ask me about what the regulations were around noise from pickleball courts, and we suggested that staff do a survey of what's out there, what people are doing, and perhaps make some recommendations. I think that's what we're having. It's more of a discussion, is that right?
Okay, well, the title of it is a little, was just maybe a little.
I didn't look at that.
It talks about, it's a little misleading. It talks about a potential noise ordinance discussion, but.
Well, the only regulations that we have are the noise ordinance, so that, I think that's why.
There was that, during that flurry of discussion about pickleball and, you know, we just wanted to kind of get in front of it, I think.
Thanks for that. And then I'd like to make a recommendation. I think about this almost every city council meeting, and I always forget to ask staff to maybe get it prepared and be ready to do it. I think we should have on our screen in the background from whatever presentation Finance or CD is doing or whoever, whatever's going on, we should always have a map of the city up, whether it's Land Vision, Land Glide, Google Earth, whatever it is, so that when we start talking about Colorado Boulevard on the east side between Mansfield and Hampden, we can have it right there, so we are all looking at it right here in real time. It would be so helpful for us to be able to have visual aids about what we're talking about, when we're talking about. about, when we're talking about various places within our village. So it, it just throw it in the background, and the two apps that I use for my work are Land Vision and Land Glide. They allow you to go around and pick up all kinds of vital information about a property, similar to a RAP map, if you guys are familiar with that. You could even have it in a RAP map. That would be totally fine, too. But we should have something to give us a visual aid on a regular basis.
Can I just interject really quickly? I would piggyback on that and say it would be really nice in our, the council office that we have, that I don't know if anybody uses other than the mayor, but if we had a framed city map, because it comes up in discussions a lot, and it's like, yeah, so I know we've got them, and it'd be nice to have one up there.
And a zoning map, maybe just an aerial and a zoning map, or maybe the zoning maps overlaid onto the aerial.
Yeah, or something like that.
And, and district boundary on that as well would be probably be helpful. Finally, as a little personal note, I've got a brother who's out in LA, and it is his birthday today. And when I asked him what he was doing for his birthday, he said, I'm just hanging out. What are you doing tonight? And I said, well, I've got city council. He said, you know what? I'm going to watch your city council meeting. I said, now, why would you do that? And he said, well, I've never seen you in action. You've been on city council for six years, and I'm going to watch your council meeting. I said, fine, I'll make you a deal. You watch my city council meeting, and I will give you a shout out. Happy birthday, brother.
Are we supposed to sing happy birthday?
No, we don't have to sing happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Although that would be pretty funny, but that's all, thank you.
All right, Counselor Blum.
Couple things. One is happy birthday, David, who grew up with my son. Buenas suerte, got to say in Spanish for you. Look forward to having you back. I guess Bruce Brown, he's coming back to the Nuggets, and so.
Did we sign?
No, but he said at the parade, he's going to be back, and Chris has said he'll be back. We look forward to having you back, Chris. So, buenas suerte, have a great time.
Counselor McGuire.
Well, I too would like to say happy birthday to Dan's brother. Happy birthday. Chris, I, I do want to say good luck and have fun. I have only really gotten to work with you for the last six months, but I've been incredibly impressed in these meetings with how well-prepared you and the staff are consistently. And I think that speaks not only to the quality of the staff that you have here, and they are incredible, but also to your leadership. And I've been impressed that no matter what the issue is we're discussing, you always have incredible perspective and advice to add, to add to the discussion. We don't always ask for it, and so I suspect there's a lot of stuff you're not, still not sharing with us, but when we do, it's, it's always amazed me, the perspective that you have. So I want to thank you for that and assure you that we are waiting with bated breath for your return. So, thank you.
And I too would like to wish Dan's brother happy birthday. Your birthday happens to be on Chris Kramer Day, so how, how.
Blessed he must be.
Honored you must feel. So happy birthday. Moving on to city manager and staff. Oh, yeah, the way Counselor Wheel has it, another thought.
Couple other.
An actual report.
Yeah, exactly. The real stuff. We had a Dr. Cog RTC meeting, actually, that's Dr. Cog RTD and CDOT getting together, and there were a couple of interesting things. This one not in the near future, but RTD is actually doing a, a study of developing a light rail extension on the northwest side, and it looks as though they're going to partner with Santa Fe, BNSF, and try to use their tracks and see what they can do about providing service on up north. It's in the study phases, so, and it's also a little confusing because there's work on front, front range rail as well that's kind of happening at about the same time and in about the same state. So we'll see how, keep, stay tuned, and we'll see how that goes. There was, there was some talk about, well, zero fare is, zero fare for cleaner air, July and August, so you want to be aware of that. RTD will offer, in effect, free rides during those two months. There's also a program they're rolling out called Respect the Ride, which is, you know, trying to up the ambience of the, the RTD, you know, so that folks feel comfortable and safe riding it. And finally Bike to Work Day, well, not finally, but Bike to Work Day, June 28th, something to think about if you have a job.
Dan, that's you. He got to represent.
And, and there was continued discussion, you know, on, on what, what role Dr. Cog might play in the, in the whole land use soup. There's a lot of dialogue between Kevin Ballmer, you know, both CML and Metro Mayors and, and Dr. Cog trying to organize roles. I think they're looking at trying to surface a lot of fact-based information so that we can operate from a common set of facts in advance of the next legislative session. Maybe a bridge too far to come up with plans derived from those facts, but that could take another year, but at least maybe we can get to the same place in terms of understanding the problem, the root causes, and operating from a set of facts. That's, that's all I have beyond, it's been, it's been a pleasure.
You're not going to wish it.
I was going to say, I just, I can't forget that. So happy, happy birthday to Dan's brother.
Counselor Holland and Eber, would you like the opportunity to wish David a happy birthday?
I already said happy birthday before, so I'll say it again. Happy birthday, Dan's brother.
Happy birthday, Dan's brother.
Okay.
And I was just, I was just, and I was just thinking before we go over to, before we go over to Mr. Kramer, thinking of all the Spanish sayings and this, you know, hasta la vista, and I'm hoping that you'd say, I'll be back.
Yeah, hasta luego, that's right, there we go.
Like the Terminator.
And we do have a cake and a session in the, in the meeting room, so.
Which also has Spanish. So real quick, before I hand it over to the directors for the updates, Councilman Sheldon, if you, on your way when you're biking to work on that day, since you're carrying the weight of six others, if you want to stop by for water, we will gladly provide a water refueling station for you with that.
Not at all.
Oh, no, not at all.
There we go.
Director Workman.
Just related to the study session for next council meeting, council, we want to be respectful of your time. We were thinking an hour-long discussion for that, but if council feels like that's a 30-minute conversation, I, I think it probably is more warranted to the hour, but just wanted to confirm that with council.
What's the topic again?
Noise and pickleball.
Oh, yes. 30 minutes, 30 minutes.
Can we get an hour to talk about?
What's the pleasure? 30 minutes, okay. We will start at 6:00 PM, then on July 18th.
Okay. And just briefly, this is Chris's last council meeting. I've known Chris for 15 years.
For now, don't like, stop letting him off the hook, everybody.
He better come back. I've, I've known Chris for 15 years now. I've worked for him for 12 of those 15 years. I'm sad that he's going to miss this, this year, but I know that he and his family will enjoy their time away, and I look forward to Chris coming back. And I'm not going to be the only one that doesn't say happy birthday to Councilman Sheldon's brother. You said David? Happy birthday, David. That's it for me.
He better be watching. David, you better be watching this movie, that's all, this, this movie, this meeting.
He's watching, who are you watching?
Director Farben.
I'm sure he was tuning into the sales tax licensing council bill. We talked about the retreat topics, follow-up coming up, August 1st Capitol Projects Fund, and November 7th will be the fund balance reserve policy. And then July 18th, we also have a recommended, staff-recommended process for public engagement around the American Rescue Plan Act funds and trying to get public input and doing a survey for possible projects. So that will be discussed on the 18th as well. Happy birthday, David.
Hey, I had a question for you, Doug. In, in your memorandum on the unaudited financial statements for April, you say that the bulk of the surplus is from 1.3 million in additional sales tax revenues not budgeted last year because of the tax code update. I'm curious, how much of that, are we receiving more, I know it wasn't budgeted, but are we actually receiving more tax revenue than we did last year? Does that make, does that question make sense?
Yes, over the past several years, there's been growth in retail sales taxes.
Is there a bigger growth this year because we're in, oh, because we're not in it yet, though, are we?
No, so that's kind of hard to say, but I definitely know that we, we will get more revenue.
I think it'll be a bigger bump.
Because we're joining, so we've changed to Economic Nexus as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Director Goldie.
I feel like I'm on an island. I don't want Chris to come back.
And you don't care about Dan's brother either.
You know, I don't care about Dan's brother's birthday or Chris coming back. No, we will miss him for a year, but I'm going to keep bothering him every couple weeks. We'll just keep emailing him. When you're riding your bike to work, we should have the speed sign up on the High Line tomorrow or Thursday. It will cut off after you hit 15, so you can't test your speed. We've also, we, as I said in the Friday update, we, we got our grant in for the electric charging station here at City Hall. We should know in the next couple months if we receive that grant.
Chief.
Chief.
Yes, thank you. That's exciting updates, actually. So as you know, we are fully staffed. We have four officers who are in their field training program in the police department. Two of those officers we hired with a tremendous amount of experience, and they bring a lot to the table. As such, they'll be progressing through their program much quicker than someone without that experience. They're, they'll be out probably next week, the week after at worst. And then the other two have several weeks left. They just graduated the academy the 1st of June. Why that's important is some of these initiatives that I've been discussing all year for, well, for example, but specifically our traffic unit, our community partnership unit, and the officers on bicycles will all begin the middle of July as a result of, of now being fully staffed. So the traffic unit will have two dedicated officers that do traffic enforcement and education. We'll have a community partnership officer that acts as both a quasi-SRO, but also liaison to the HOAs, community engagements, community programs. And the bike unit, the bicycle unit, I had the good privilege of just purchasing last week two new bicycles that, that allow for long-range riding, so 50 miles a day. So we should see officers on bicycles every day, absent inclement weather, beginning the middle of July and really throughout the year. So we're really excited about those initiatives. They've been a long time coming. We wanted to, to improve that quality of service, but not at, at the cost of sacrificing patrol staffing. So now that patrol staffing is where it should be, then these specialized assignments can come to fruition. So more to come on that. Thank you.
I had a question from your report also, and congratulations on, on being fully staffed and all the training. I think that's terrific. And I know in this day and age, it's not easy to, to be fully staffed in the police departments. You said that you purchased the new stopsticks. Are those the things that you use to stop fleeing cars? How, how do you get in front of them to deploy them? How does that work?
That's a great question. First answer is yes. The stopstick is a, is a brand of what we call a tire deflation device. So it's, it's essentially a 12-foot-long pipe that is plastic in nature, but it has these, these metal tubes that insert into a violator's tires and slowly deflate to control that deflation. Now, how you deploy them is very situational. As an example, I, I personally had a stolen vehicle flee for me yesterday, and although I had Councilmember Sheldon in the back of my mind, I, we actually contemplated using stopsticks. Unfortunately, it was right here on Quincy, and they tailgated, intentionally tailgated the car in front of them, so we couldn't get the sticks in front of them. But typically, it is, you know, the way we're geographically designed here in the cities, as they exit a neighborhood, be a great time to deploy those. If you have enough notice that they're coming down a specific roadway that's not too wide because you're supposed to filter the lane of traffic, and then that way the stopstick can be deployed, but it's very situational, highly effective when done correctly and when those situations align, but, but very situational on how and when you do it.
Clerk Gillespie, nothing to report. City Attorney Josh. Put you on the spot, do you have a report?
No, I apologize, I don't have anything to report, except for I guess CML is going to be next week, and a few of you might be attending. Hopefully, I'll be able to see you, I'll be there, many of our attorneys will also be there. And then I guess that would be, oh, and Kathy is back, so she'll be here next time.
Did you want to wish David a happy birthday?
Yeah.
See what you did there? And happy birthday to everyone who has a birthday today.
I also just real quickly wanted to thank Joshua, because last council meeting, you provided us some very realistic and important advice during our executive session that was very helpful for me to be able to understand what we could and could not offer to help get this deal done with 90 Meat Lane. So thank you very much.
I noticed there was not a Joshua proclamation day or anything.
Not here.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I do want to say, this is my last council meeting before I take off for a year. I, I do thank council for the proclamation. It means so much. But I hope council doesn't get mad when I cross out the Chris Kramer and put in city staff, city staff day, because everything that was in the whereas clause is really a result of all of staff. And, you know, I'm excited to come back. I told a lot of you that this is the best job I've ever had, and the city staff is a big part of that. City council, our residents are also massive parts of that. But really, honestly, I, I, I'm coming back, whether, whether you want it or not, because working here, it really is the best job I've ever had. And our staff, you know, when you, when you listen to that, there's, there's more we could add. It really is remarkable with such a lean staff, what we're able to do. So that proclamation really is, it's a group effort, and so I appreciate that, and on behalf of the, all of staff, we all appreciate that. With that said, I'm also extremely glad that we did the second reading for 90 Meat Lane tonight. That feels like a very nice bow on top of, from a timing perspective. But tomorrow, Jim Thorson, you, you're going to be in extremely capable hands. He's going to be here for additional handoff work that we're going to be doing. So he and I have talked a lot, and we're going to be talking continuously throughout. You know, he, he's, he's really ready to go, and so it's, it's going to work out so well, and it's going to be very smooth. So congratulations to you for pulling off, it's quite the 2023 solution, right? This is the days of old where it's all sort of rigid and formulaic, those days are gone, and you guys are really helping sort of lead the way on some of that stuff. So congratulations to all of you as well. So that's it, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Well, thank you. I think we need to plan our next council retreat in Spain.
Yes.
How many guest rooms do you have?
I forgot, though. I did have one other item, and I would be remiss if I weren't to say happy birthday to David, so.
To David. On that note, I really do think we need to sing happy birthday, and Randy, you're on harmony since. All right, here, it's Dave, we're singing happy birthday to David. Here we go, ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David. Happy birthday to you.
That's awesome. Thanks, everybody.
And if there was a happy leave of absence day song, we would sing it, but I don't think I know that one.
Well, if, yeah. If these happy birthday shout-outs get more YouTube views, maybe we should do more of these, right?
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to the conference room for some cake for Chris.
Second.
Second.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
Thanks, everybody, that was great.